Go ahead.
All right, so I'm calling the September fifteenth Board of Selectmen meeting back into session. We had a intentionally, or we tried to have a short recess for a public hearing. So I'm going to say again, as Chairman of the Board of Selectmen for the town of Newton, I find that due to the state of emergency, delivered by the governor as a result of COVID-19, there's emergency order number 12, that the body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location, but was authorized pursuant to the emergency order. We're utilizing Zoom conferencing call software. All members of the board have the ability to communicate during the meeting through this platform. And the public has contemporaneous access to listen and participate as necessary. The number is six four six eight seven six nine nine two three with a meeting ID of nine zero four zero four five seven seven three two, where there was a link provided through notice or posting of the agenda. If anyone has a problem, please email BOSSsecretary@newtonnh.net. In the event that you have a problem accessing during the meeting through the technical issues with the software, then we would adjourn schedule if the problem is with the software. Please note that all votes will be taken during this meeting via roll call vote. And with that at seven forty-one, I guess I'm going to ask if somebody from the board has a motion regarding the non-public meeting from earlier tonight. So I'm going to be that member of the board and I'm going to-
You need a motion to seal the minutes from the non-public meeting dated nine fifteen twenty twenty until being necessary?
Yeah, I would second, and I would just add till such time that a majority of the board deems it no longer necessary.
Correct.
You've got that one, Diane, right? You've memorized that one. So Charlie was the second. I'm going to do a roll call vote. Larry?
Hi.
Charlie?
Hi.
Matt's an eye, so we, that's unanimous for the three-member board tonight. So everybody's been waiting patiently for Trish McCarthy to do the COVID update. So Trish, if you would, please.
Okay, thank you. Oh, so patiently. So we haven't spoken in a while. It's, I, it probably at this point, you know, I used to give you today's numbers and then compare it with the last time we spoke. But now that it's almost two weeks apart, I'm not doing that. I'm just giving you current numbers as of today. So we have new positives confirmed today of eighteen. New Hampshire positive, seven thousand seven hundred and fourteen recovered, six thousand nine eighty-seven. Unfortunately, deaths are four thirty-six. Our total current cases are two hundred and ninety-one. Out of that, persons who have been hospitalized are seven twenty-one. And current hospitalizations after those that have been discharged is down to seven. Military support, there's, there's nothing really new here. The National Guard still continues to support the call centers, testing, obviously, testing sites and PPE distribution. Our national and regible, regional topics are clearly about the vaccine makers and a safety pledge. India moved into the second place with number of coronavirus cases. And UNH frat party positive cases, that's a lot of the talk that's going on right now locally. Also, the UNA, I'm sorry, the UNH fraternity also was tied to eleven new cases, which was a big deal. There's a lot of talk about the primary in New Hampshire, as you know, and I'm sure our moderator will chat about that in a little bit. Health and Human Service update, they said they're getting concerned, expect a shortage on gloves to continue through the end of the month. They feel more orders are coming in due to the November election and being prepared for that. JIC is also, Joint Information Command is saying a few things. So some of them are trending stories about the vaccine and complications of it. Some of the conversations were about Wyndham High School and obviously the UNH campus testing and the progress of the next COVID-19 relief bill. And there, I just did this as bullet points. The pandemic financially endangers nearly half of the American households. This is all in the JIC conversations. And also shortages of the N95 masks are continuing. The locally, they're still reporting on New Hampshire numbers and case numbers at New Hampshire colleges. There's a large reaction on social media to report that President Trump actively downplayed the gravity of COVID-19 early on the pandemic. So that's out there in social media. Also outbreaks and numbers at college campuses around the nation. Also talk about the Senate COVID relief bill failing to pass. Locally, they're talking about, again, colleges and schools, and first they're opening, then they're not, and then they're remote, and now the teachers are retiring. So a lot of conversation about that. They did, one comment was that no COVID cases have been linked to the Trump rally. But there was one case linked to bike wait. They also talked about University of Pittsburgh discovered an antibody that neutralizes the coronavirus. Also a vaccine company-
Who's going to say that they did the Trump rally?
Sorry.
So I think that was Mr. Scrovan, because you came up on the screen. I think you need to mute your computer if you would.
Okay, thank you. So for the public, these reports are coming from our Homeland Security site. So that's what I do this report on. So what I'm saying is not just coming from Newton, it's actually coming from higher ups at a high pay grade than we are. So to continue that, the CEO of one of the vaccine manufacturing companies stated there will not be enough vaccine for the entire world until 2024. They also talked about Connecticut will issue fines for not wearing masks and disregarding gathering size limits. That, again, talking about many elementary schools in New Hampshire going remote. Also the talk about New Hampshire residents encouraged to get flu shots. And one of the other, the last on the JIC Joint Information Command was schools are scrambling for substitutes because other teachers are opting to retire amidst the COVID concerns. Our Safety and Wellness from the state says they're excited about the potential of a vaccine, but still said, remember the basic social distancing and hand washing. And also the Safety and Wellness, they're concerned about the lingering effects of coronavirus infections. The, our Newton EOC COVID update, you just needed to know a couple of things. Gopher Two has been approved and submitted for payment. So we got, and we, this, we just found this out, a total of twenty-eight thousand one hundred and fifty-six dollars and thirteen cents. And included in that number two grant, which was due July fifteenth, that took them this long to respond, was also the stipend reimbursement for the town, a benefit portion, which was two thousand three hundred and ninety-six dollars and fifty cents. So we got that. And if you remember, the stipend that we had put in for was forty-six thousand four hundred, and we did get that back entirely. Gopher Three was due today, and Larry and I actually were able to submit it on Friday for a total of twenty-five thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars and sixty-nine cents. So again, that's what we submitted. Remember, they critique it and, you know, they, they have lots of conversations with us. We have to justify what we're doing. We did get them on this one to approve, at least so far, Tony's time for the new COVID cleaning. In the past, they would not do that. All they would pay for was the health agent. So we kind of scored a little one on that. And then the election grant, which thanks to Kim, she submitted an extension, and that was for two thousand five hundred and two dollars and fifty-five cents. Again, thank you, Kim. We had a little glitch on this because it came under the EOC. But because we weren't the contact person Friday when I went to Town Hall to speak with Mary Jo and get the figures, I didn't have anything from the state not realizing they weren't sending to us, it to us. So thank you for Kim reaching out and Matt for you going in and signing. Thank you for that. I guess we have to pay attention if it's coming under the EOC. Perhaps Larry should be the contact person so we don't miss an email. And then I know our moderator is probably going to talk on ten info. I sent it to the Board of Selectmen. You also asked about S.H.I.E.L.D. info. I guess I can wait and we can talk about elections instead of me getting into that now. If that's how you feel, and I am done.
Thank you, thank you. And what we really all have to do is, and we've been doing this a lot lately, which is a good thing, is our thanks to the EMD staff here, as well as Kim, our bookkeeper, and all the department heads for working on all of this stuff. Because we've had a lot of really good news in terms of the grants through this whole thing. So the town really is being supported well in this area. So I think it's one of those things when all this is coming down to the town report, right? There's going to be a good story to tell in that town report. So thank you guys for your efforts.
Thank you.
What I'd like to ask Trish, and this is going to segue into another agenda item, is we're a little ahead of the game, but ahead is probably better. But there's been a lot of discussions, at least in, in my house, about trick-or-treating. And I think, I think there's a way we can do trick-or-treating and still social distance. And I'm wondering if Trish, in any of those calls, has any, has the governor, excuse me, or Health Department, has anybody issued any guidelines yet regarding trick-or-treating?
You know what? They haven't, but tomorrow's call at noon is going to be talking about it. So maybe what I could do is after the call, I'll type up the minutes and I'll send it to you.
That'd be good, because I think we can do it, because you figure, house to house, if you don't want to participate, you just shut your lights off. You don't, you don't do anything. If you want to go out with your kids, then you, I mean, there's plenty of cloth masks, festive masks you can buy for Halloween. And then people who don't want to participate in that way don't have to go out with their kids. And if you look on Facebook or any of these places, they're already talking about creative ways to pass out the candy, where you could have a folding table in front of your house, just leave the candy there.
Right.
The other thing too is, what I'm going to do is typically when the kids get home with the candy, I just eat it anyway. Because they're very young, but what I'll do this time is kind of put it aside for a few days, kind of like they were suggesting with the mail and all that stuff.
They also, somebody did suggest that if we decide to put out any kind of guidance, and it'll probably be covered on tomorrow's call, to also encourage not homemade stuff, just do prepackaged items.
Right. So is, if everybody's okay on the Board of Selectmen, let's just kind of add this to our next meeting, which is October sixth, right? And I, I think we'll have guidance to digest from Trish by then. But I think, I think at this point, does the board agree we don't want to make a decision right now? But what's the board thinking?
So Matt, Larry, Charlie, Charlie, you got it?
No, you go ahead.
So Matt, yeah, excellent idea. Yeah, they're on Facebook and all that. I think we can do the trick-or-treating in disregard the trunk-or-treat this year.
Yes.
And again, they're outside, it's not a crowd no more than probably six people together. But it sounds like a good idea. And Trish, if I don't remind, tomorrow, just, yeah, just write that question down if I don't bring it up.
Okay.
And, and Larry, just real quick on the trunk-or-treat, last night at the rec meeting, we kind of decided that trunk-or-treat the way we do it, it, we couldn't social distance because our, our piece of property there that we set up on is too small. If we, if we for some reason had access to a Walmart parking lot, you could really spread out and you'd probably be okay. But, but the Rec Commission recommends no trunk-or-treat this year because of what Larry just said.
Yep.
Right, and I think a lot of people feel that way about the trunk-or-treat, but they would really love to have trick-or-treat.
Yeah. Charlie, were you going to jump in there?
No, I'm, I go along with Larry. I want trick-or-treat.
So, so Charlie? I was going to say, put that in the minutes. Charlie still goes out and trick-or-treat. So, all right, so thank you on that one. So we'll wait to hear, see if there's guidelines and we can publish the guidelines to the residents and stuff like that. People, I think, will be happy that at least there's something we don't have to cancel.
Yep, and we could add the message on our electric sign too, whatever we decide to do.
Right. Any other questions for EMD regarding COVID-19 from anybody on the call?
So Matt, I have one question. You guys are talking about the face shields. Do you guys need some? Because I need to put that order in.
No, you know what, what shields it was, Larry, is the shields for the Selectman table, those shields.
Okay.
The dividers, yeah.
All right, because we can order those other shields if people feel more comfortable wearing those, they're not so restrictive to the nose or the mouth.
Right.
I can order like five hundred of those.
And if you, if you read the union leader today, and if you watch Sunday Night Football with Andy Reid from the Kansas City Chiefs, he kept fogging up in his face shield. Apparently, there's a company in New Hampshire that's going to make fogless face shields. So that was in the union leader. All right, so the, I want to segue to elections while we have the moderator here. But something we're wondering about is you guys had those shields up for the, the staff when they were voting on Tuesday. We're wondering if we can use those shields since they're in the Town Hall anyway. When we have meetings in there, we could use those as dividers. So since we invested in them, they will be available for the elections. But in the meantime, if we can use those for our meetings, what's everybody think about that?
First, you can. The only thing you're going to need to do is, is coordinate a little bit with, I think Jim Doggett's planning to paint the wooden supports so they're not as ugly for the fall election. So just coordinate for him to make sure he's painting on a day when you're not having a meeting. But it's a wonderful idea to put them to use in the meantime. The only thing I would encourage is I had some little clamps on the tables to make sure they didn't get knocked off. Because they, they'll sit on a table pretty well, but if somebody, you know, bumps into one, you could knock it over and you don't want to get hit with the thing. So either make sure you're careful and not clumsy, or clip it to the edge of the table so it doesn't get knocked over if, you know, somebody's moving around.
Right. And, and as we segue into the Butler Building and everything, I said this earlier before everybody was on, but we need to congratulate, and I, I hesitate to mention specific names because I'll forget people, but congratulations to the town moderator, town clerk, deputy town clerk, and all the volunteers last Tuesday. They did, and, and it goes further, right? Police Department as the host and, and all the other departments who, everybody kind of showed up to help out. We also had a late night. I shouldn't say we, because I wasn't there, but those who stayed had a late night. And so congratulations to you guys. You did a great job. And we know, we've been saying it's a dress rehearsal for November third, but great job to you guys. And now we have to segue into November third plan. So, so thank you. And Mr. Dismelik, what, what's our next step here?
Well, well, I'm going to second that, and, and I'm not going to try to go through everybody's names because there was a huge team of people, everybody contributed. But I'm going to give my special thanks to Chief Jewitt and the Police Department, who were fabulous hosts. They went way and above, you know, to help out, and it was wonderful. We, I think the voters loved it. We were very comfortable there. Everything we even thought we might need instantly arrived. And so Chief, that was fantastic. And then I have a special thanks to Tricia for spending the entire day out front and personally greeting and directing a lot of voters, I mean, hundreds.
Yes.
And that's a tough job, and normally we rotate people through that. And normally that job's a lot simpler than this time, but I think it works great. So Tricia, thanks.
And I got a tan on one of them, because that was-
So, so let's talk about, you know, first off, it worked. I, I think the plan we had in general worked. We, we had a long day, really for two reasons. One, every primary is a long day because the reporting requirements are complicated. You got two different ballots, of course, and the state, we love the state, but the state needs a lot of data that might not be obvious if you were just thinking about who won the election. They want to know things like, you know, who took, who was an undeclared voter that took a Democratic ballot? How many of them did you get? And by the way, how many of them were absentee voters? And so from a paperwork point of view, we do like five times as much paperwork at a primary as we do at the general election. But we're used to that. That's just, that's part of running elections. So the first thing I, I'd like to touch on is we learned a lot. And one of the reasons we wanted to run the primary at the same place we're going to run the general election is so we can try stuff out. And there was really only one area that didn't work, and so I'll just touch on that quickly, and it's not an issue for the, for the Selectmen. We learned, and it's not an issue for November, we learned, much to our, I'll say horror, that AccuVote voting machines, because of the old rubber rollers from, you know, forty years ago, don't like warm days. Much to our horror, both machines died during the course of the day. And thankfully, the vendor that supplies them to the state was able to lend us a machine we could use in the evening. Because it turns out unbeknownst to us, and I think a lot of people, that those machines stop working if they get hot. I mean, even slightly hot. So we won't have that problem in November because we're not going to have an eighty-degree day in November. But what I really want to focus on tonight is really two things, and the one main area where I think the Selectmen need to be primarily involved, is our original plan was to use the garage bay we did this time, plus an extra tent out front. Because we need to have a much bigger area based, because we're going to have a much bigger turnout of voters in November. And the state law means, requires us to have many more booths at the general election, and rightly so, because we're going to have a lot more voters. And we need to keep them spaced out. So we were planning to add a tent on the front. But that looks like it might be challenging, particularly if we have bad weather and the expense of the tent seems to be getting higher and higher and higher from the tent guys. And, you know, we could have problems, like it might leak or something. So the idea came up, and I'm going to thank Chief Jewitt for actually kind of throwing this idea on the table, of why don't we use the very large garage in the Butler Building that currently stores some Humvees, I think the one police vehicle, one current police vehicle, and a massive pile of junk? And so the idea really is, and I mean, this is the proposal for the board to get behind, is to, instead of spending, I think, thirty-nine hundred dollars plus on a tent, why don't we, you know, invest kind of some time and effort into getting that Butler Building usable? So then we have one large room we can use. And we're going to use it the same way to the extent possible, as we'll have the garage doors up as much as we can. If it starts raining or it's, you know, snowing or something, we'll obviously have to pull them down some. But we have a very large indoor space. If necessary, to make it even bigger, we could co-opt the adjoining space that's used for the forestry fire truck, but I'm trying to not have to do that. But mainly what we'd have to do is, and the decision the Selectmen would have to make, would be to kind of scrape together a budget from somewhere to get a pile of junk out of that garage, in essence, to pay the disposal fees on it, or, you know, pay somebody to bring over a dump truck and haul it away. And then to clean out the inside of that space to the extent that it's not ugly or horrible. And then we have to improve the lighting. And that could either be done temporarily, or probably for the same amount of money, hang some fluorescent shop lamps and be done with it. And then have that garage updated. And with a small modest investment above that, you know, spray some spray paint, white spray paint on the walls up to about ten feet, and pressure wash the floor and maybe even give it a coat of paint. And then we'll have a nice fresh garage building that can be used by, you know, whatever departments want to use it. Probably mostly the PD vehicles that are in there now. But then we also have a place that's, that can run any election and can be used for other purposes if you need a big indoor space for some project or the road agent needs it or whatever. So, you know, obviously, that's not the moderator's function to rehab buildings that belong to the town. But I think that's in the Selectmen's domain. But the question would be, you know, do you want to undertake that? And if so, we need to move quickly to haul the junk away, hang some lights, and, you know, clean the place out. At a minimum, I think if we haul the junk away and hang some temporary lights, we could use it. But I think by the time we hang the temporary lights, the cost to get the electrician in there and hang some real lights is going to be roughly the same. So that's, that's the idea. That's the key proposal, and that's, I think, what we ought to talk about some tonight. And, you know, let's see what the feeling is of people think, how doable that is? Can we get going? And who can we kind of put at the sort of operational front end of that? And I'm thinking somebody in town who has a lot of contact with people in the trades that can, you know, make a couple of phone calls and round up, you know, an electrician and, you know, the power washing guy and that kind of stuff. And, you know, who can make a phone call and get a dump truck full of stuff or two over to a dump. So that's the idea.
I have no idea who that person would be.
Back on the other topics.
I think that's a really good idea. I'm in favor of a plan that would kind of invest money wisely so we have something tangible out of this that we can use, you know, every day rather than, I, I think, I'll say it, I think the tent companies are being kind of opportunistic right now. And they realize that everybody's after tents on November third, so the prices, you know, it's, I can't blame them, but the prices are going up. So what's, what's the rest of the board thinking?
So Matt, I heard the heating system doesn't work over there. That'll have to be upgraded.
Yeah, I don't know if that's true or not.
My understanding from, from Chief Jewitt is it does work, that the Fire Department, you know, amped up the heating system. But remember, we're not much different situation. The tent hasn't had much of a heating system either. There was some kind of portable heating.
No, that's good. I'm a hundred percent for it. Yeah, absolutely. Charlie?
I'm for it.
Okay, Nancy?
I reached out to Shanti last Thursday and asked him if he could take a look. He was going over on Saturday to kind of look at the lighting. And he thought he might have a report ready for today, but I haven't received anything yet. I expect to. I think he feels it's probably a good idea, but again, I don't have his report yet, so.
Okay, so I'm, I'm sure that's forthcoming in the next couple of days, but so, so-
One more question, though.
Go ahead.
Does that building, Mr. Dismelik would know, does that have the ADA? Could, could, you know what I'm saying, ADA compliant?
Yeah.
Compliant.
We do need to be, and the open bay garage met that requirement because it's, you can roll right in. The issue for accessibility, in the case of an election space, we don't have to meet the accessible bathrooms requirement. In other words, and, and yet we are going to meet that because we have an accessible porta-pot.
Correct.
So we kind of went above and beyond that. A polling place does not need to provide, you know, a full set of resources like an office would. We need to be accessible by someone who's in a wheelchair or who has another disability. And the other garage had a very flush entrance. If we have a bump in the entrance, you know, more than an inch or so, and I, I'd have to look at the Butler Building again to see that, then we'll have to improvise a little ramp. But that's a sort of a, you know, sort of second-tier issue in that, you know, certainly no worse than the situation we have in Town Hall, where we have a door and we have a, you know, it's accessible, but we're right, we have issues. So I don't have a problem with that. We also are kind of in a situation as a temporary usage and with our intention to have the garage doors open, that I think we're in a kind of different fire safety context than we would be in, say, Town Hall, where, you know, we run into capacity limits and all, because we're in a wood building with limited accessibility. In this case, we're, I think, when we got, are pretty much planning to have the doors open, I, I mean, the garage door is down the length of the building, that we've got multiple means of egress. And, and we're in a metal building that presumably has, you know, very limited hazard in it.
I think it-
I think we'll be okay on that front. That's, you know, obviously the, that's kind of a, somebody should make a quick run through those items from a, you know, a fire safety point of view or so on. But I don't think it's, I don't think, certainly I would expect it- I don't think, certainly I would expect it would be a less risky situation to have a crowd in a steel Butler, you know, building with all the doors open than it would be packed the same number of people into the stairwell on the upper floor of Town Hall.
I would guess the response time for the fire department will be pretty good, too.
Yeah, they got a truck in the building. I mean, the four trucks right there.
Right.
Much shorter than that.
So I guess my question is, are you guys comfortable? You have our support in terms of the idea. Are you guys comfortable now putting together a rough budget to bring back to us that we can kind of get on an agenda very soon? Very quickly and, and get it approved?
Well, I'm certainly happy to, you know, to lead the charge on that with, but I'd like to get either Mike Povero involved or one of the other people that, you know, is kind of in that building a lot. The fellow who's the electrical inspector, because I'm not a construction guy. I mean, I have some construction experience years ago. But I'm not, you know, I can't just pick up the phone and have the electrician on the call. No, you know, I can't just say, hey, Bill, how much is it going to cost to do this job? And, you know, have my friend come over and look at it. Which there's other guys in town that can do that. And we need to get them engaged to make it happen, you know, quickly.
So Diane, Diane, please let the record reflect that the moderator was the first one to mention Mike Povero's name and volunteering his name. Because what's going to happen tomorrow morning, my phone's going to ring at like eight-thirty. And Mike's going to be saying, who volunteered me to this? But I think that's I think he's, he's kind of like one of the landlords over there. Knows the facility. I'm sure he'd be happy to help out. I think we're all, we all like the kid, but so what I'll do is, I'll take the action. I'll reach out to Mike tomorrow. Because I'm sure he's in bed right now. It's like after eight. He gets up early. So I'll reach out to him tomorrow and then maybe either Mike and I, or one of us will reach back out to Bob and then go from there. Does that work?
Sounds good. Sounds good.
And then we'll get Chief Jewitt involved too, because he's, he's already kind of walked us through it, I think, all of us. So kind of know what we're getting into. And money is going to be another one of those concerns. I, I think in terms of the, the Gopher grants, what, what's Larry and Trish see as this being eligible?
So far, they're not, I'll let Larry jump in too, but so far they're not giving us anything towards election except that ballot money. So the twenty-five hundred that we just submitted from the primary could go towards whatever the cost would be to get the Butler Building straightened out. Because the postage and all that, all the other expenses that either Nancy or Mary Jo or Diane or the Planning Board or even ZBA has submitted with, for stamps or envelopes or whatever, we've submitted that. So that piece of expense is being done. But they're not talking anything about tents or even in the primary, it was all only about the absentee ballot count and that's it.
Okay. But, you know, I think what it comes down to is we've all heard the story here. We're spending some money either on tents.
Right.
Or the building. I think if you ask most people, it makes more sense to do some work in the building. And we're, we're not talking about, you know, total retrofit of the building. We're talking about very simple habitable type items.
Simple, simple things with the exception like, like Mr. Dismelik just mentioned, gee, I never call you that formally. That, you know, lighting, lighting was a big deal for Mary Jo and Cheryl. And even at the end of the night when I was trying to help. So like Bob said, we've got to, whatever we do for lighting has to, we have to make sure it's right wherever we're going to put Mary Jo and Cheryl. But it makes more sense to spend money on a building we've already got than to throw it away on a tent we're not going to keep.
Yep.
Right. And the tent could have problems. And there's the, the building, no matter what happens, right? I mean, short of, you know, tornado, even if there's a blizzard, the building is going to be, you know, fine. But we could find the tent, you know, some issue shows up, or what happens to the tent company defaults on us.
Right.
Then we got a real problem, right? And not easy to solve. So it's, it's like a safer, more stable thing because in fact, other than hauling the trash out of the building and moving the vehicles out, we really, you know, if we had to set up temporary lighting, that'd be way easier than having to invent a reason for a tent without the tent. Right?
Yep. We thought about this before the primary. I still say we could have said, come and vote and get a chair. And then we'd get rid of all the junk.
So, so kind of, kind of wrapping this agenda item up. So is the Board of Selectmen okay with that plan? So we're going to engage some key people here to come up with a rough budget estimate, get it in front of the board very quickly and, and move out on it because we're less than two months out now.
Yep.
All right.
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, cool. So anything else regarding elections?
Very briefly. And because this also is going to go into the domain of the budgets and the selectmen and so forth. I made a single camera unit so you could show photo IDs to the ballot clerks without having to handle it back and forth. I think the voters liked it and the ballot clerks loved it. It, it really helped Cheryl move quicker, which is important because every minute or second really counts when you're checking voters in. Because that's, you know, sort of defines how fast you can move them through the line. And we are definitely going to need more than one check-in station operating at the general election. It's usually two and sometimes three. Last time we did it, we ran three. So that suggests it would be wonderful if we had more of those things. And I have obviously no problem with bringing mine back, but I'm not so sure I want to own two more of them. So the question is, it's if there's funding available, if we can do it, it would be very helpful to, you know, basically acquire one or two, optimally two more. And that would give us three because I clearly going to bring mine back. So I included on the document I sent in to Trish and, and I hope you got it, Nancy and so on, the, the kind of breakdown of what the parts cost and where to get them. So if you have funding available and want to get the parts for one or two more of those, you can go ahead and order them. It's easier, I think, for the, you know, for the selectmen to order directly. And I'll make the wooden bracket, you know, the part. I don't, I can make as many of them as you want, but I have the cameras and the monitors.
And Larry and I did talk about that. And he said, yeah, let's just try to, let's just do it and submit it with our last gopher. Which means I've got to have all the invoices, everything that we're going to buy by October fifteenth. So that makes sense. It's up to the selectmen. But Larry and I did talk about, let's try to submit it.
Great. The, for Mr. Dismelik, that we got to talk about a patent on that thing because that was pretty cool. And if, if you try to, try to market that, I think the, everybody in town owns a piece of that patent. That's the intellectual property of Newton, New Hampshire.
I don't think it's a tangible subject matter. But I think, I, I mean, I already sort of publicized it to the other moderators, like, look, if you want to make one, just go ahead and do it. Because it really helped.
It's pretty cool.
Yeah. And it's, and it's easy to do the, the, just so that for people who haven't seen the document, the camera is a hundred and ninety-nine bucks at Best Buy or anywhere. And the monitor is a hundred and twenty-five bucks. And you need a ten dollar cable because the HDMI cable that Sony gives you with the camera is only about two feet long. So, you know, to make it convenient range, but the total investment is not much. And the little wood bracket thing is, you know, scraps of plywood kind of stuck together.
And I would, and again, I would say this is something that's not just for November third, that it's something.
Oh, look at that, right. No, what's, once you see how easy it is to read, the voters couldn't really tell. But when you're looking at that monitor, the person's license is huge. So you can immediately read it in a second. You don't have to squint and say, what's that name? It's just, it's right there. So yeah, we'll use that for the town elections for sure.
Okay, cool. All right. Well, we'll add that to the list. Anything else?
That's all I've got. And, you know, just final thanks again to everybody. It really, it really came off well.
It did. A lot of positive feedback, which we don't often get. So thanks, everybody, again.
Thank you.
And we'll talk very soon on this subject again. I'm going to move on down our list here. And we're going to, we've already done E, which is Halloween. Treats for the troops. What was this fancy whether we're going to participate?
That's, Diane was wondering if we were going to do Halloween so we could sign up for the treat for troops.
No, I was thinking we weren't going to do it because how are we going to collect the treats?
Oh, okay. All right. Well, then I guess it's a mood issue then.
Yeah.
I would like to, if, if maybe you could, and, and this is, we're ahead of the game here, but maybe if somebody could do a little research, maybe they're doing something different this year because of COVID nineteen. Maybe there's a fundraising type thing. We could send a URL around to the residents. Something like that. I don't know. A lot of these places are thinking that way right now. Because I, I hate to think we can't participate. Maybe there's a different way we can participate.
Okay.
All right. I think F is from the Planning Board in terms of holding public meetings in Town Hall, which I'll, I think Roger's on the phone, but basically, and we reviewed it last time. We've given the okay for these boards to use Town Hall. But we're still under the governor's order. So if they don't, excuse me, if they don't want to, they don't have to. So we'll just pick it up from there. And, and Roger, what were your questions?
Basically, next week, the Planning Board will talk about it and decide whether we want to meet in person or not. But I wanted from the selectmen who control the building, what are their requirements and guidelines if the board chooses to meet i- in the building? You know, are masks required or recommended? How many people are allowed in, in, in the room? You know, that, those kinds of guidelines that you could give us to, to help us make our decisions.
Yeah. And I'm wondering, I'm kind of looking at Trish and Larry. I know we put together the guidelines for the reopening or the soft reopening.
Yep.
Did we ever, because I know our first BOS meeting back together was kind of an experiment in a way. Did we ever, you know, write down the guidelines for meetings yet? Have we done that yet?
Well, we discussed it, and I'll let Larry jump in, but we did discuss it. And it's in the minutes of our meeting. The chairs were marked at six feet apart. The chair capacity was, Larry jumped in, I think it was twenty-five. And this is in one of our public meetings in the minutes.
Yeah, twenty-five.
And that allowed for the additional members of the Planning Board. Masks cannot be mandatory because for health reasons, some people can say they can't wear them, but it's highly recommended. And then what was also suggested is if people come without a mask, then they would be assigned a certain area to sit so they wouldn't be intermingling with people that had a mask. And that was all in one of our minutes of one of our meetings.
Do you have any idea about when?
About when what? The meeting? Oh, God.
Which meeting minutes?
I couldn't tell you. We were meeting three days a week. So it was after our legal calls. I don't know.
So let me suggest this, and Diane will, will love to do this for us, but
Oh, no.
If, if Diane and Trish can work together, if we can lift that
Sure.
from those minutes and put like a one pager together.
Okay.
And email that to all the boards, I think.
That, that would be very helpful.
Yeah. Sound good, Diane?
Yeah. I don't have it. Trish does. So she can just throw it into a work book.
I will.
So Matt?
Larry?
Don't forget to ask Roger that other question before he leaves.
Yeah, absolutely. So in terms of meeting, if the Planning Board's going to vote to meet, Roger, do you have anything else you need for that meeting to vote?
I don't think so. I don't think I have anything else I need. I have, you know, it's just the information of, of what we need to do.
Okay, great. While we have you on, we wanted to bring up, again, it's called the, we got a, the Transportation Advisory Council, which I think is part of Rockingham Planning Commission. We've been brought to our attention that the BOS has the ability to appoint a Newton member to this council. Currently, Newton does not have a representative. We do have one member of the Planning Board has expressed her interest to us via an email to the BOS. So we're, we're just asking, is there another way?
That, that item will be on the agenda next Tuesday.
Okay. So I think what we're asking is if you can collect interest and forward it to us, then we can vote.
Okay.
And so we have one already, but we just want to make sure we're not leaving anybody out, I think is what we're doing.
So, so do you want me to then? How, how, how are you suggesting I get other, the names of other people who are interested?
So I, I think in the board can jump in if they disagree with me, but I, I think it's just mention it at the Planning Board meeting. And people can kind of raise their hand, you know, that sort of thing.
Okay. And if there is only one person at the meeting on Tuesday who's interested, we would forward that name to the, to the board?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, okay. I think that, that, that is scheduled to be on the agenda already.
Great. All right. That's all we had on that one. Anybody? Can we let Roger go?
Yep.
All right. So Roger.
Good evening.
You're allowed to leave now.
Bye-bye.
Thank you. All right, getting towards the end here. Letter H is the landscaping bids. Nancy, can you fill us in on the results?
Yes, we have two bids that I'm about to open. And I can tell you who they're from, but I'm sure we'll have to do comparisons. So one of them is D and J Landscaping LLC from out of Plasto. And the second one is from Granite Coast. Who we currently have, and they are out of Epping. So as you know, there's several locations. So I think Diane can probably look at these and she worked with these in the past. And then maybe have something for your, I don't know, Di, do you, can you wait two weeks for the next meeting or?
Yeah, this is all, yeah, because our contract ends in the, the end of October. This is more for the budget so that you know how much you have to budget.
Okay, perfect.
All right. So you'll put some together and put it out there in the ether for us to review and then at a future agenda.
Basically, it'd probably just be the bottom line because they should be all the same.
Yeah.
Okay, if there's a total, total?
Yeah, there should be a total, total.
So, so yeah, we, I think in the RFP, we were pretty clear about that, right?
Exactly, yeah.
So do you want the total, Matt?
I don't think so.
Okay. Okay, just in case you want to renegotiate or whatever.
Yeah, exactly. And, and we've been told by Town Council before in public meetings, you can, can hold on to that information for negotiation purposes. But it'll be available very shortly to the select board to review.
Yep.
All right. So that's all that, we didn't require a vote on that tonight. That was just opening and future planning.
Right.
All right. So I have one more thing under I. So this is my proposal to the board. See if you want to do this. I think Larry mentioned this in the past, so I want to give him credit a little bit. But as you know, we, we don't have liaisons in 2020 for any of these departments. So what, I think Larry was the one who mentioned it and I kind of latched on to it. But what I'm going to propose, and I don't know how often we want to do this, I wouldn't want to do it in every single meeting. But we'd ask the department heads to put together basically a four-page PowerPoint presentation on the current status of their department. And they can present it to the town in terms of how are they doing against their budget? How are they doing in terms of How are they doing in terms of staffing needs? Maybe they need to bring in people? Um, maybe there's news they want to share with the town of, you know, new equipment, whatever it may be. We can kind of, uh, make this up as we go to see what fits, but the goal here would be, we've asked several departments in the past to do monthly status reports via email, and whatever it is, they get too busy or whatnot, they haven't been completing those, so if we, if we can do those in a public meeting where the town can be engaged, I think that'll be good communication, good transparency, and if you look at the budget end of this, we'll be actually building up towards budget season. So, um, again, just an idea, what's the rest of the board think?
I think the, the monthly email should still go on and maybe a live report with presentation um, every three months, that'd be four times a year, or four, every four months, three times a year.
Charlie, what do you think?
I'll go along with that.
Yeah, I'm wondering, um, it's, uh, I was leaning towards once a quarter, like Larry just described. Kind of see how that goes. I don't know if that's too often or not enough, but, um, so I think, I think what I'd like to do is can we, can we pick a date on the calendar right now to do the first one? And can we, what would it be? How about October nineteenth? So that's over a month.
That's a Monday.
Twentieth?
Twentieth, yep.
Well, October twentieth's good.
So, um, I guess what we're, we're asking is, so they, they have over a month to prepare for it, and I think the departments that we should schedule for that night are the big ones, police, fire, transfer station. Anybody else I'm leaving out?
No.
I think, uh, you know, highway's a pretty big budget, but that's an elected position, so, I mean, if he wants to, uh, present, then I say he's welcome, but I don't think we, we can direct him to do so.
Yes, we can. It still works under us.
Well, the budget's under us, yeah, so.
It should be reconsidered.
Okay, so we'll see, we'll see what, uh, we'll put together, what I'd like to do is, I'll put together kind of a template for these things and, um, run it by the board, and then we'll provide the department heads with the template and, um, go from there. Is that alright?
Matt, I'd like to, um, alternate them to, if we're going to do the four, do two one month and two the next month. That way we're not sitting two, three hours of presentations on one selectman's meeting.
Yeah, that's a pretty good idea. Hope, hopefully there's a clock on these things, so it's, they're not that long, but, but that's a good idea, so if we have two on October nineteenth or twentieth, and then two on whatever it is, November, you know, I like that.
So are you going to continue the monthly report request or?
Sounds like it.
Okay.
So, yeah, we haven't, we haven't ever given any direction to stop it, so.
But it hasn't been happening either.
I'll, I'll just leave my statement as it is. Never told them to stop it, so.
So which two departments do you want on October, um, twentieth?
Um, I don't know. What do you guys think? Police and fire?
Make the decision on Tuesday.
Maybe transfer station and one of the police or fire. Because the police and fire, I think, are both going to be big.
Yeah. So Charlie, what were you going to say?
I said make a decision on, uh, Tuesday's meeting.
We're not adding, are we?
I hope not, but, but, um, yeah, let's, uh, let's wait and see on that one. Uh, we'll get, we'll get back to them on that, how about we put it that way. But I like what Nancy said is police and fire on the same night might be too much.
Yeah, I think so.
But we'll let them know, I guess.
So we should tell them that they have to have a presentation ready, ready by October twentieth, and we'll decide then who's going to be first victims?
Well, we're not going to decide on October twentieth, but they'll know.
No, right, but they, all four departments is what you're saying, right?
Yep.
The fire, the police, transfer and highway have to have a presentation ready by October twentieth.
Well, I think what we're saying is two of them will have it by October twentieth. We're going to let them know, hopefully in the next week or two, who those two are, and then the other two will need one for two weeks after that.
So your next meeting is October sixth?
Correct, yep.
So you're going to give that, that, those two departments two, two weeks?
We won't do it via a meeting. Is, is the board, is the board alright if, um, if we, if I send a proposal via email just for, this is scheduling, it's not decision-making. But this is just a scheduling email. If the board has any issues with, while we send out, let us know.
No, go ahead.
Okay. Alright, so I'm sure there'll be a thousand questions on what we just discussed. So, uh, I guess send them all my way. I'm
Don't worry, I will.
I know you will.
If you just call it a progress report, it shouldn't be that much of a problem.
That's all it is.
And if they don't have a progress, then they're not doing anything.
So and the other thing, too, is we, we need to accept the fact that these things will build as we go, so the first time we do it will, will be a test run for the next time we do it and the time after that, so. Alright, anything else for the agenda? Because I think that's it.
I'm good.
I think you covered it all.
Alright. Anybody from the board? Are we good to, uh, get out of here?
I think so.
Alright, anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Alright, seconded by Charlie. All in favor? Aye, I think.
Aye.
Alright, so thanks, everybody. Have a good night, and we'll, uh, we'll be talking in about two weeks.